Welcome. Welcome to the San Mateo Foster City School District Board Study Session. It is 5:30 and we're going to call this meeting to order. Everyone want to join me in with a flag salute? I dedicate to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome, let's see, trustee, yeah?
Yeah.
Trustee Hope?
Here.
And trustee Proctor?
Here.
Trustee Brooks, I'm here. And trustee Tran is out for the meeting. May I get an approval, a motion to a court of the agenda tonight?
Motion to a court.
So.
All in favor say aye.
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 Okay. If there are any public statements related to agenda items, please your, please limit your statements to three minutes. And with that, we will turn this meeting over to our team director. Yeah. Our directors and.
We have a few people coming in too.
Yeah.
Let me present the math crew.
Are there people online?
Welcome to the comments. Shall we pause in for that part first or?
We'll probably come right now.
We'll come to it.
Um, probably later once we.
Okay.
In case they have questions.
Alright, so go ahead and get us started. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our TK eighth grade math board study session. We're really excited to be able to present to you all tonight. And our focus for tonight is really about transforming teaching and learning. So our focus is really going to center around the experience of our students in the classroom and the experience of our math teachers. So I'm Kenyatta Cook, Middle School Executive Director of Curriculum Instruction. And if everybody can introduce themselves, who's presenting tonight?
Pam Barfield, Executive Director of Curriculum Instruction for Elementary Schools.
My name's Amy Burke, I'm the math coordinator for K-3.
My name is Dana Peedy, I am a middle school math teacher and teacher on special assignment at Abbott Middle School.
Hi, I'm Elizabeth Agaravere, and I'm a seventh and eighth grade math teacher at Abbott.
Right, thank you. So we can go ahead to the next slide. So as I mentioned, we're really grounding our work tonight around the student and teacher experience. And we start with our vision and our mission because that's at the foundation of our work. And that's where we really keep our focus as we work throughout the school year and think about professional development. It's really about carrying out our vision and our mission. So in San Mateo Foster City, students become enthusiastic and proficient learners of mathematics who are able to share their thinking, use multiple representations, and build on the ideas of others. So the way that we think about operationalizing that and really the how of that is with our math program. So our math program aims to increase meaningful mathematical discourse and sense-making to build fluency, flexibility, and strategic competence in all of our students. So in thinking about the mathematical practices, when you're in our classrooms and you're serving and seeing students engage in learning, we want to see that they're taking risks, that they're working persistently through problems, and that they're communicating their learning, both orally with peers but also in written form. So one of the things that is really important when we're thinking about centering this experience around our students is really fostering their agency. And so there is a California mathematics framework that's relatively new. And this piece of the California mathematics frameworks really speaks to our work. Students learn best when they are actively engaged in questioning, struggling, problem-solving, reasoning, communicating, making connections, and explaining their learning. So in other words, when they are making sense of the world around them, the research is really clear that powerful mathematics classrooms are places where we nurture and really foster that student agency in math. So like we do in our classrooms, it's really important for us to engage in the learning, to really understand what we need. So I'm going to turn it over to my colleague, our math coordinator, Amy Burke, to take us through a math activity so you can kind of see some of this in action. Okay?
Alright. So, um. Before we begin, for yourself, not to be shared right now, but I want you to think about your experiences in classrooms learning math. We don't need to share that right now, but I just want you to think about that as we go into a very abridged math activity that comes from our eighth grade classrooms. So what our Math 8 teachers do, and Dana, you developed this, so I'll get notes from her later. But is the teacher stands up and they hold a cup. And they say, "How many cups tall am I?" So the question to each of you, you have a whiteboard, you have a pen. This is not for public consumption, we're not going to, you know, all put them up and talk about that for right now. But just for yourself, will you write down, "How many cups tall do you think I am?"
You are?
You are.
Me.
Teacher.
Teacher.
Might need to stand if we can see your legs.
Oh. Hey.
Oh, does it include heels?
Uh, yeah, let's include that for this moment. That sounds good. Oh, I'm noticing that some people are using some of the additional materials already. Interesting. Do you folks have a guess? You don't have to share what it is, but I want you to make your estimate.
What do you think? Well, that's, go ahead.
How much is it?
I mean, six. Like seventeen centimeters. About seven inches, right?
Do you mind going to our next slide?
Yes.
So again, I already saw many of you using some of the tools that we have available. This is one of our standards for mathematical practices, using appropriate tools. And I see many of you grabbing for those tools, I'm seeing measuring happening, I heard some conversations. So that was kind of exciting to see, well done, thank you. So everyone in the room probably has a guess, I'm just going to call on the two Math 8 teachers. Would one of you just mind saying like, what's a guess that your students might have for me or?
I would see an eighth grader go like this and use intuition around proportional reasoning and guess a number like ten or eleven, maybe?
Okay, I think that makes a lot of sense, makes a lot of sense. We go to the next slide, please. Whoops.
At the beginning.
Let's, let's go back.
Until we show them how they stack.
I'm so sorry, yeah. This one was supposed to help us recognize that we're not, you know, cups don't stack like this with a third and then a fourth on it like this. Cups stack like this.
Oh, how many cups like that?
All of a sudden, whoa.
I know we gave all.
Recalculating.
Another step. Yeah, they got another one.
Oh. I have one more minute for the most fun part of this, which is this part. So I'm going to quickly go through what our students engage in in class. This is an introduction to linear relationships. You heard Dana referencing proportional reasoning and proportional relationships? That's a special type of relationship that goes through the origin, goes through zero, zero, and you know, then goes up with a constant growth rate. A linear relationship, if you'll go to the next slide. And I like to think about things graphically, I'm super visual. So a linear relationship means that we're not going to actually start at zero. We're going to start at this part of the cup minus the rim or the lip of the cup. And then we're going to constantly add that rate of growth. Okay, so what we do in our classes, this takes more than five minutes, is we allow students to engage, become curious, and to use their tools. The resources and tools in our students' classrooms in our classrooms here in San Mateo Foster City also include the other students in the room. If we had the time to share out how you were thinking about it versus how you were thinking about it, we would learn a lot from one another. And we would be able to build up a collective, deep understanding around how is this situation growing? The students sort of close this activity by providing a write-up. This is one example from a group of three students in Ms. Vidal's class who have shown their thinking with three methods. The first one on the very left you'll see is very numeric. They're showing their thinking with numbers. They're showing their thinking with equations. I also want to point out, this group is showing their thinking using color. We call that technical writing, they're making some connections between information with color, which is really cool. They also do a write-up, like a, you know, a paragraph form to explain their thinking. We do work on reading and writing in math as well, we know how important that is for our students. This group has also used a table. And there's a graph that shows. So this is an example of the multiple representations that we like to see and we want to support our students to engage with during our classes. Next slide. Our math team has also developed extension activities that take, that are at the ready for students who are ready for the next step. And these are some examples that teachers have sort of in their back pocket once they see that groups are ready for that next level. They might go in this order, they might know their students really well and, or they do know those students really well and they can select which one of these might be really interesting and engaging for a set of students. So these are, you know, "How many of your cups would you need to reach your height? How tall would a stack of 2,024 cups be?" This is another example of a mathematical practice. This is using mathematical modeling to predict something in the future. Imagine you have twenty of your cups and twenty-four of this original cup. How tall would a stack including both kinds of cups be? Now we're starting to get into a system of equations, or yeah, two variables in the equation, excuse me. Here are some prices for the different cups, lots of information. For your cup, how much would it cost to build a tower that's as tall as you? How about as tall as the Statue of Liberty? How many cups to get to the moon? So, and the last one I think is really fun. If you wanted to build a tower as tall as your teacher for the least amount of money, would you choose the original cups, your cups, or a combination of both? This is a systems of equations problem, we're asking students to optimize an output. This is some really rich mathematics in Math 8. So that is the type of activity that we are putting in front of our students. It's open, has a low floor. The low floor might be kids literally stacking all the cups. Stack it up, see what it is. The high ceiling, we just shared some examples of what that is. And also absolutely the interactions that students are having in class around the mathematics deepens the learning and heightens the ceiling. So how do we get there? We've set up a system of supports in this district that starts from our strategic plan. Our strategic plans, three goals, our achievement, wellness, and equity. And so that plan has allowed us to invest in the system. And the system includes our district-level support, myself and the two executive directors here. Our role supports our site leaders and our math tosas to do the work that then cascades into the classroom level with the teachers. Our math tosas, our release and coaching support, our focus on developing curriculum, the ongoing PD that we provide. All of those are consistent collaboration opportunities for our teachers and supporting their curriculum and instructional strategies in the classroom. Okay, with that, let's hear a bit from two of our middle school teachers from Abbott. You've already shared with us your names, but would you maybe share with us a bit about, you know, what role, how long have you been in the district, and what are you seeing in classrooms?
Sure, so my name is Dana Peedy, this is my tenth year here in our district, I was hired in 2015, can you believe it? And I spent the first eight years of my career at Bayside where I actually did my student teaching and I was so compelled by the work I was doing with my colleague. I was compelled to stay. And then this is now my second year at Abbott Middle School. And I've taught all the grade levels and all the courses, including our double math, Math 8 Algebra Combo class you'll hear about later. And as I alluded to, since 2021, I've had the opportunity to be both a classroom teacher and a teacher on special assignment. So I get to take on work like curriculum development and instructional coaching, but I also get to stay grounded in the classroom experience, which gives me better awareness of what's happening with students, you know, informs my coaching and my collaboration work as well. And that curriculum development I alluded to means I take our adopted curriculum, which is Amplify via Desmos. And I incorporate, as Kenyatta mentioned earlier, guidance from the framework to build in things like language routines, collaboration structures, norms and implementation, and give my colleagues ideas about what it would look like to take what's offered to us in Desmos and create this rich experience for our students, align with the mission and vision.
Thank you. Ellie, do you mind briefly introducing yourself?
Yeah, I'm Elizabeth again, or Ellie. And this is my third year teaching and my third year at the district. So I started here, I teach seventh and eighth grade math. And I, since my first year, have been part of the like coaching model, so I've always had a math coach since I started.
Awesome.
Do you want to go first?
Sure. I'll talk a little bit about the math coaching model and how that's supported me and the collaboration at the district. So in my three years, I've always had a math coach and my math coach Dana this year. And I have another math coach for seventh grade. They support me with everything, from lesson planning to thinking about best practices, creating these low-floor, high-ceiling tasks, how to best support students in the classroom in every way. And our coaches are regularly in the classroom with us, which is really, really nice because they get to observe me teaching regularly. It's not just once a semester, once a year, but they really get to see me regularly teach and give me really meaningful feedback as a result. They also get to know my students, which is really special because getting to know them is a big part of knowing how to best support them. Something else that's really special about the coaching model is knowing that an experienced teacher like Dana has time carved out of her schedule to dedicate to helping me improve my practice as a newer teacher. As we know, teachers are very busy. And as a new teacher, it's really hard to ask for help. So having that time to rely on, that one-on-one time, is really, really meaningful and has affected my practice in the best way. The, I'm able to ask for support in all kinds of ways. So sometimes I will ask my math coach to model part of a lesson that I'm not super comfortable with or confident in, you know, how to best run it in a classroom. I can also ask them if I'm having difficulty with a particular class or with a particular student, you know, "What would you do in this situation?" Or "What's the best way to support everyone?" I have also asked for help with, like, "Can you give me feedback about this part of my teaching?" For example, last year it was a lot about, "Am I spending too long with one group or am I spending too long with one student? How can I instead step back and support the whole room more regularly?" So that has all come from Dana and other coaches that I've worked with. The collaboration across the district has also made a huge impact because knowing that other teachers across my site and across the district are teaching the same lessons with the same materials, like this one you saw. I think we taught it every middle school, like Ms. Vidal's is at Bayside, we're at Abbott, and we taught the same lesson. So it's really nice to have that community to lean on and brainstorm with and just to learn from more people is always better. The common goals that we have in the math classroom are also really special. We always tell students to communicate productively, work persistently, and take risks. And that's true across the district. And we believe that if they can do those three things, then they're growing as math learners. So knowing that that message is being shared in every classroom, I think is really special.
I can't believe how lucky I am to have this job and do this work with these people. Any teacher will say the best part of their work is working with the students. And I get to double dip in that because I have amazing times with my own students and then I get to go into Ellie's room and whichever classroom I pop into, I'm just so inspired by the work that her students are doing because of the environment that she creates. It's really cool to see, I mean, I was just thinking about a second ago, there's never a moment where students are just doing nothing. Like they're so actively involved in every step of the process and every step of an eighty-five-minute block. Students are not just passively taking in formulas or procedures, but they're active participants in the sense-making. You know, I've had administrators comment that they hear sometimes more talking in math classes than, you know, and it's really exciting to hear kids making sense of mathematics ideas for themselves. So we regularly hear them, you know, asking questions, "What do I know? What's this problem about? What am I trying to figure out? Is there a different way to do it? How do you see it or how do you think about it?" And they're really supportive of each other. Middle schoolers are often shy, especially around people who are not their friends yet. So it takes some time to build that community and to build that trust with each other. But we've gotten to a point where we've been able to do randomized groups at Abbott a couple of times and students have been incredibly supportive of each other. And especially when we give them access, when we do give them access to their friends, they take it and run. And it's really empowering that we can give students the tools to help them author their mathematical experiences. So we give them those norms and you'll hear kids say to each other, "Take a risk, take a risk." We tell them, you know, we'll give them the sentence frames and you'll hear them ask each other, "So what do you think? Well, how do you say it? Can you, what do you hear me saying? Can you rephrase that?" And they, it's kind of goofy, but there's real authenticity in wanting the best for each other, not just in getting answers down or getting grades up, but they're really invested in helping each other understand, which is just so beautiful and humanizing and empowering to see. Another thing that I think is really unique about where we've taken this work here in our district is that use of multiple representations as a problem-solving tool. So for example, on that poster with cups, we might ask students to create the table, the graph, the numeric, and the visual, and the verbal representation. So we often ask them to do all the representations. But what happens over time is students develop multiple representations as agency for themselves. So if we're doing, for example, you know, if they see a test like a state testing question that isn't as open or isn't as accessible, they might be given a graph, they know they can make a tea table to represent it. They're given an ugly table, they know they can make their own better tea table or they can write an equation for it or they can draw a picture of it. So this open work allows them to open up more traditional and more closed mathematics and be flexible problem solvers. And it's so cool to see students, again, like I said, with those sentence frames and norms, take the tools that we give them or multiple representations are a tool, then they can use that tool to solve problems without us pre-teaching, pre-going through algorithms or procedures with them, they can solve their own problems from that. And again, the most energizing piece of all this is seeing this come to life, not just in one room or one team or one site, but across the sites and across the classrooms. So obviously as a coach, I've been able to, you know, get to know others better. But this work, as Ellie mentioned, we know each other across the sites. So half of my career here in our district was before these shifts happened. We met each other a couple of times a year, professional development maybe. We barely knew each other, let alone what was happening in our rooms. But now, we're in the trenches with each other, we're meeting regularly. I get ideas from Ellie, from Burrell teachers. I was at Burrell the other day and a teacher shared something with me that I've met through our common PD that Amy's going to talk about in a bit. I popped into a Bayside classroom, I got to see a lesson that I had done the previous week. And Bayside kids I'd never even met before were so excited to tell me all their ideas. They discovered a mistake, they fixed it with me, they, they figured it out. They just told me what they were doing. And I was an adult they'd never even met before. So it's really cool to see these shifts happen at scale. And I think what's especially unique is that there's so much teacher autonomy still and flexibility with the common mission and the common DNA. So I might see a problem that I've adapted and I'll see how a different teacher adapted it in a different way. Or I might see, you know, whether lessons are super similar or have some of that same DNA, I can see how that teacher is thinking about multiple representations. How is that teacher increasing student voice in their classroom? And so we have the ability to, and flexibility to serve our strengths and meet our students' strengths and our students' needs. But we have that common alignment around what we want for our kids and the achievement that we're, the experience that we're all working towards. And it's just a really exciting team to be a part of.
Thank you. Okay, so as you can hear, and of course you already know, we have really passionate, really amazing teachers in our district who are really committed to their students and success for all students. And something that we are continuing to work towards is for every student who is in our classrooms that we are providing equitable access to robust mathematics. So we, you know, we've done a few things over the past few years to set progress in motion towards equitable access. And we're going to start by just quickly reviewing our math pathways, which I'm sure you're aware of, but just as a quick review, we do have three pathways through our middle school years. The first pathway has every student in a heterogeneous Math 6 classroom together, moving into Math 7 as seventh graders and landing in Math 8 as eighth graders. This is our recommended pathway for all students. The reason this is our recommended pathway for all students is we be, we believe that all students can be successful in these courses with the teaching and the activities that we develop. We know that there's a lot of depth in the mathematics in these courses. And we know that once our students leave us and go to high school, they again have multiple pathways to AP coursework at the high schools. And we want to set every student from our school system up to have that really strong foundation and be successful with whichever pathway they choose. That being said, we also have two other options. Another option is students can move from their Math 7 class and they can elect into two periods, we call it the double-period math, two periods of math in their eighth grade year. This allows for any student who loves doing math, who's interested in doing math every single day on the block period rather than every other day, this allows students to get into that coursework and access algebra if they choose to in their eighth grade year. Our third pathway allows for students to take our heterogeneous Math 6 coursework to then demonstrate proficiency by taking assessments that show their proficiency on Math 7 standards. And then they are placed into a Math 8 course in their seventh grade year and then a high school algebra course in their eighth grade year. So these are our three pathways available to students through our middle grades. We made that shift five years ago, that, excuse me, that policy decision to have multiple pathways, excuse me, I think it was four years ago. Sorry, excuse me. Okay. So, and we didn't just make a policy decision. And in fact, it was, when I say "we," I actually mean the board made that decision. And we, as a district, said, "This is a big decision and we want to set it up for success." So this is sort of a timeline of our implementation and the support that we've given year over year as we've grown this program. So in 2021, that was the first year that we had multiple sites that had teachers on, who were teaching in the classroom like Dana and had release periods. Their focus that year was only Math 6. That was when we began to work on developing a curriculum that would go beyond the adopted textbook and allow for more open tasks that all students could access and that we could also allow enrichment activities within. And it also offered that coaching support, that was the first year. Then we have sort of moved that support to our seventh grade classrooms with the students who were then there. Last year was our first year offering our double math class. So we, we again moved most of the support to our Math 8 classrooms and our double math classrooms and the algebra course. And then this year, we've, I would say we've got a little more support at the eighth grade year because we're still, you know, working on developing those courses so that we can meet the needs in those. But we're also thinking about how do we make this sustainable over time? So with the supports that we've invested in and the policy decision that was made a few years ago, we have of course been tracking access to algebra over the years. So in 2021, 22, we had one hundred seventy. So in twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, we had a hundred and seventy-two students who were accessing algebra. The next year there were, um, and about, what is that, fifty more? Um, last year was the first year that we offered the double math, um, course. That means that we were having eighty more students who were accessing algebra. And then this year you can see we've grown again, a little over eight, eighty-five. Who are now accessing before. So we do have more students who are selecting to take that course. And we feel like the system of support that we've put in place, the allowance of time for students to really. Dig into those concepts and go deep into their math learning is allowing them, you know, the appropriate time to learn the content in those courses.
Quick question. I don't know if this is addressed on a later slide, but three eighty-nine, what percentage of students in middle school is that, or in eighth grade is that?
We have approximately, um.
A little bit under a thousand.
Yeah, so it's about thirty, thirty-nine percent. Yeah, from about seventeen percent previously. Can you share years ago?
Can you share, um, which schools, um, have the highest, um, enrollment in the. Is it, you know, concentrated in ones or two schools or, or, you know?
I would actually have to look at the numbers. I have a guess for the top two, but I don't know which one. Um, we have a lot of students accessing algebra through just the Singleton Algebra Course. And the double math course at Bowdage. And then we also have, uh, a big number who are selecting to take the double math. This is this year's data at Burrell. So I would really have to look at those two side by side.
It's Bowdage and Burrell.
Yeah, those two, yeah.
Get your exact numbers down.
Yeah, um, so one of our goals when we, um, thought about, uh, you know. Changing a policy and coming in with supports for all students. Was not only to increase the number of students who were accessing algebra, but to impact. And the percentage of students by, uh, race and ethnicity. Who were choosing and selecting into those courses. This graph is, uh, graph, the Y axis is showing you the percent of students over time. Who are accessing algebra. So just as an example to go through, if we're looking at the left four columns. These columns are, um, you know, describing the students who are, um, identified as Asian in our, uh, school district. In twenty-one, twenty-two, sixty percent of the students who were accessing algebra, taking algebra. Um, were identified as Asian. You can see a number of years later, that percentage has reduced to forty-six percent. But I want to point out the numbers that are along the bottom. That's the N. That's the count of actually how many students. So while the percentage has come down in that particular category, the number of students has been increasing. It was ninety-two students back in twenty twenty-one, twenty-two who were accessing algebra. Now we have a hundred and seventy-nine students who are identified as Asian, um, who are accessing algebra. Um, and we have been looking at our students who are identified as Hispanic, Latino, Latinx. Um, because we were noticing, um, that there was a disproportionate amount of students who are accessing algebra. Multiple years ago, there were four percent of the students accessing. In fact, it was only seven students across the district. And over the past few years, you can see that steady increase both in percentage and again, in number of students who are accessing algebra. Um, enrollment in a class is one thing, but how are we performing is, um, also very important for us to consider. We, of course, have multiple measures that we're using, but we'll start just by sharing this, um, snapshot of. Eighth grade math CASP scores, percentage of our eighth graders overall. Who are meeting and exceeding the standard on that summative assessment. So again, you can see twenty twenty-one, we had forty-seven percent of our eighth graders who are meeting and exceeding the standard. It dropped a bit in twenty twenty-two to twenty-three. And then last year we saw, um, a bit of a jump. Uh, up to fifty-two percent of our students. So again, in terms of the N, like the number, um, if we look at last year, it's approximately four hundred and fifty students. Who were meeting and exceeding on CASP and then, excuse me, twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, approximately four hundred and fifty students. In twenty-three, twenty-four, up to five hundred and twenty. That's some pretty significant growth.
Sorry, for the, for this stat here, do we have comparisons, I guess, in fifth and sixth grade? In terms of where, like whether or not more than fifty percent were meeting or exceeding?
Um, we can get that, of course, yes.
I guess I'm trying to see if this is a consistent pattern over time with the same group of students or if we're either improving or underperforming.
That was three different cohorts of students.
That was three, yeah, and actually I do.
Eighth graders in this year, eighth graders in this year.
I do have that at the very end, but we weren't sure if the question would be asked, but now we will make sure to share a cohorted.
We'll circle back.
Yeah, a cohort. Um, okay, so just to come back after checking out some of our data, um, I really want to come back to this, um. Piece that Kenyatta started us off with. We are not just after chasing data points. We're really after transforming the teaching and learning in our classrooms for our students. We are investing in the students' experience. How do they see themselves as math learners? What are we putting in front of them? Are we expanding the definition of what mathematics is and who is a mathematician? Those are also our goals. And, um, we have spent a lot of time and energy, um. With our teachers developing and curating a curriculum that they know is better suited to the needs of the students in front of them. Than just picking up the, um, adopted text off the shelf. So you was, you're seeing on the left, um, you know, just a snapshot of the, um, guidance documents. They have developed these guidance documents that are shared. I think you call them lesson outlines. Lesson outlines that are a day by day outline of here's an activity, here's all the resources. And here's a video of Dana explaining how it went in her classroom. Like, that's the level of granular detail that we've gone to with the investment that we've made. Um, in support of our students really engaging in, um, powerful mathematics. Um, another piece of our system that we've worked a lot on is around how are we monitoring our progress, right? Obviously, waiting once a year for CASP summative assessment is not enough information for us to know. Um, how we're progressing towards our goals. Um, so we have developed from our, um, adopted text. So we're calling them curriculum embedded unit assessments. So we take our adopted text, our team takes a look at what are the high priority standards and we, um. Then put them out to our students. And very importantly, we then have our teachers. Work together to rubric score and to look carefully at student work. I think this is actually quite unique that our district is doing this level of work. It's one thing to say, let's, you know, get, um, an assessment system. Where we put all of our kids on computers, they type in numbers, it's right or wrong and we get a number. We go further than that because we value the multiple representations. We want to see how our students are, um, developing their language to describe their thinking. And we, um, what you're seeing here is a video from, from last year of, um, a math eight calibration meeting. Which means that all of our math eight teachers across the district met after school. We do this twice a year. Yeah, twice a year. Um, they meet after school on a, on a Zoom and they take a look at. Student work and they say, what would you give this? Would you score it a one, a two, or a three, or a four? So that when we're entering our scores into our central system, Dana's four means the same thing as Ellie's score. There she is. Um, this deep look at student work helps our teachers to know what their students know. It gives them, um, a lens to look for the assets and let's take what the students know and go further with that. We do collect this data, um, twice a year in the middle school years. And then we use the CASP as sort of our third check on how are we, how are students across the district doing? So we do look at that data district wide. We also, um, provide this data to our site leaders so that they can look at just their school site. This is one example of the fall math date at a school site. And site leaders then have conversations with their math team about, I'm noticing this. How do we, um, better support you to reach this set of students? What do we need to do so that all of our students are engaging with rigorous mathematics? Um, so district level, site level uses this data, but most importantly. Our teachers use the data to inform their decisions that next day, that next week. Um, based on what they are seeing, their students know how to do.
I'm going to give Amy's voice a rest to thank our middle school teachers and invite up our, um, elementary teachers. You guys.
Thank you. These are the, um, oh, I'm sorry, yeah, this is just one particular site.
Oh, we're gonna be screwed.
Yeah, it was just supposed to be an example, sharing, you know, that we collect the data and how we can look at the data.
I'm excited we started with middle school, um, because, uh, but when we were first making some of those decisions, I was working in middle school. As a principal and, and it's just, it just when I think about, you know, when I kind of turn the reins over and I think about where we are now. We've had, we've been doing so much amazing work in the middle school and I'm sharing that before we kind of go back. To the framework for a minute because in elementary, we kind of started that after that, but it, but it always feels right because in the math work. The middle school is so, is so content specific that I think what we've been seeing there and what's been happening around. Changing teaching and learning is really impacting and supporting us as we're doing some similar work in, in elementary. So, uh, I want to come back to the framework for a minute. Um, uh, you know, we think about what we know about how students learn math and what the research says. One thing in the elementary world, we've really been focusing on to get our students ready for middle school and deep path learning. As it gets more difficult is, um, what we call productive struggle. And maybe you've heard that term before and sometimes, you know, even as a parent or a teacher, like, struggle, we don't want our kids to struggle. But when we saw this activity, I think for all of us, even though it was an eighth grade one, we might've gone like, this might feel like a struggle. And Amy did not as the teacher come around and try to give us answers or, you know, tell us, you know, well, you're not doing this part right or you need. We had to think through that work on our own. And so in the elementary and especially in the four or five work that we've been leaning into. We really are working on giving students that voice. Because unfortunately, sometimes in mathematics, it's a second grader might start thinking, well, I'm not good at math because I'm not as fast. And that's what we hear even in some of our youngest grade levels. So we're really trying to change that narrative. We want students to know just because you're struggling with an answer doesn't mean you're not good at math. Because mathematicians struggle when they're doing mathematics outside of school. So this has been a big piece. I loved hearing earlier and I know it's been a big part of the work. Um, Amy and myself collaborate daily with our multilingual team because we want to lift the language. When students come in younger, they're still building that language, whether their language is English as their first language or it's another language as their first language. In math, there's a lot of academic vocabulary. So we're really trying to cross that and lift the language of math. And when we think about productive, productive struggle, we think about math reasoning, we think about making sense in math. All that lives in, um, being, you be able to teach our students, talk about the math, think about the math and share their math thinking. So it's been a big piece of our work. Um, we're excited to have two of our elementary, um, math team here. So we have Julie Wolf, who is our math teacher, Tosa from Laurel. And we have Yara Awal from, who is our fifth grade math teacher at Laurel as well. So I introduced your names, but if you wouldn't mind sharing a little bit about, um, how long you've been here. Um, a little bit more and well, we said your grade level, how long you've been here and then I think similar prompt. What are you seeing and hearing students doing in math? And then, um, I would say also, um, you know, how is this relationship between, um, coach and teacher working?
Okay, so I'm Julie Wolf and I've been teaching for twenty-eight years, um, three years here in the district, um, coaching full-time at Laurel. Um, not every Tosa is a full-time release at the elementary level, but I have the privilege to stay at one site a hundred percent. So that's great. Um, let's see, my job includes, um, leading professional development sessions. So we have teams of teachers. We meet together on Tuesday afternoons across the district. We've done summer sessions and we do Wednesday collaborative meetings. In addition to any individual work that we might do with a teacher one-on-one. Our PD has really focused on math content, instructional strategies, pedagogy, um, and really building a math collaborative. And kind of broadening the view of what it means to know and do mathematics. Um, and I thought that we're getting a lot of the overview, so I wanted to share three very specific stories of what I've seen and witnessed in classrooms just this week. And chose these three stories because I think they're representative of things that are happening in classrooms across the district every day. These are goosebump stories, I call them, because they give me goosebumps. So, um, one story I'll share, first of all, was a third grade classroom I was in. And there's this newcomer who's been in the country for three months and had not spoken a single word, um, in class. Until one day got up and decided to try the mindset routine in English. And that was the very first words he spoke in his classroom this year. Um, and I personally wasn't super surprised that it was in math class because the routine of the mindset routine is so encouraging, it's so open-ended. Um, and it's something that students do every single day. Um, but it was still really cool. The teacher was like, oh, you know. Um, second story I'll share was we had a staff meeting this week where, um, five, I think it was five.
Four.
Four fifth graders came to teach the Laurel staff how to play a math game at the staff meeting. And, um, throughout the game, the students were talking to us about that pit of learning and how to. Climb up the steps of struggle and what to do when we were stuck because we did get stuck. And it wasn't an easy game and we were just rolling dice, making combinations of ten. Like you would think it maybe wasn't that hard, but we had to turn them in a particular way to make a combination of ten that was different than what we had originally rolled. So it was, it was again, a really neat experience to think that, that students understand that they are teachers. And everyone in the room was a learner. Uh, third story I'll share was, um, I'll talk about, uh, let's see. Well, I'll talk about the collaboration meeting we had around our CFAs this week. So we were sitting down scoring our CFAs together and the teachers were noticing, oh my goodness. We're seeing more visual representations on this student work than we have seen in the past three years. And that was something that stood out right away. Um, and then another teacher said, well, I wonder what this looks like in sixth grade math. And then Yara pulls out this document and says, oh, well, here's what the standard says in sixth grade. And just the fact that teachers are starting to think about not just their own grade level. Um, but what this is going to look like for the students moving forward. We could really see that students are, are sorry, teachers are taking ownership for what are big ideas in math. And this was something that, I mean, it was very rare to have teachers meeting at the elementary level specifically around math. This regularly, so that was another goosebump moment for me this week. Thank you.
Just a quick point, CFA is those common formative assessments that we're just, you know, educators and their acronyms.
Sorry, thank you.
Well, hi, I'm Yara Ahwell. Uh, this is my second year in the district, teaching fifth grade at Laurel, but my fourth year teaching fifth grade overall because I'm crazy. Um, and everyone has said so many great things already and I wish I could touch upon every point. But I think a real big priority across the district has been reducing that anxiety around math. And maybe a lot of us felt growing up and kids still are feeling and increasing the joy around that. And stepping into other teachers' classrooms or even my own classroom, we hear noise. And sometimes learning is noisy and that's a beautiful thing, joyful noise. I hear kids laughing, I hear kids disagreeing, I hear kids saying, wait, why? And that's a big one for me. Wait, why? Because as has been mentioned, we're really promoting students explaining their reasoning. Yes, you have the answer. I don't care. Julie has heard me say that. Okay, you have the answer. Good for you. How did you get it? That's what I want to know. Can you explain it to your partner? Can you show me a different method? And that's something I've really been noticing is increasing, even just from the support Julie has offered. Last year, I can see the kids that were in. Last year, I can see the kids that were in fourth grade last year coming into fifth grade. They have more experience trying new methods, showing visual representations, like, we love these taped diagrams right now, and explaining their thinking. My first mindset routine was actually led by Amy. And when she kept pushing and going, well, why? Explain further. What do you mean by that? I was like, oh, wow, this is kind of intense. Am I wrong? Then she explained, no, you want students to be able to very specifically explain their reasoning, their ideas and why. And my students are comfortable with that. If I ask them, what do you mean by that? Wait, what part? You said this is one fourth, what's one fourth? They don't feel that apprehension any longer that they're wrong. They just changed their phrasing. They are, okay, this part right here, can I come show you? Or kids will jump in for each other, kind of like Dana was saying, that they're working together, they're so nonjudgmental. They really are just enjoying the learning. We're very grateful at Laurel to have Julie 100% released. And I will even say, just over time, the comfortability of having someone who's nonjudgmental, who's going to come in and give specific constructive feedback is something that I don't think a lot of districts have. At the beginning, you know, it's like, who's this person who's coming to my classroom? Am I being observed? But then I realized, oh, hey, Julie's here to support me, to support my students. And because she is able to spend so much time at our site and in our classrooms, the students know her as well. If I'm not available to help, they're like, I'll go ask Miss Wolf. And I'm like, beautiful, that's exactly what I want you to have. This is another teacher, authority figure at our school who is here to help you. Collaboration is such a big thing for us. It's not just about knowing that we're all doing what we're supposed to be doing, like we aren't doing what we're supposed to be doing. It's kind of making sure that our students are having equitable experiences. Like, hey, I tried this activity out, we talked about the pit of learning in my class, this is what I did. Okay, next teacher tries it, next teacher tries it. Because we're able to share these ideas and we're able to say, here's what worked, here's what didn't. Hey, on lesson four, watch out for this problem, you might want to try rephrasing that for your students. Hey, did you try this optional activity? Julie will print you the cards if you want to try it. It's just been a really great experience to have that coach. It's, I'm still in my early years of teaching and being able to have someone who's going to say, hey, you're doing great on all these things. I'm here if you'd like to try something new and I will support you through that.
Thank you so much. So shifting, you know, a bit more into our elementary math program. Part of what we wanted to show today, we did a little backwards planning, right? Starting with the middle school and now coming to elementary school. Because we're all connected in the district, right? What we do in elementary school impacts how our students are going into their middle schools. So again, this is showing the last four years, the work that we've engaged in at the elementary level. The first year we're involved in the strategic planning. Last, excuse me, the, this is 22, 23. We focused with third grade and we built out a math collaborative that even met on Saturdays to do PD together. We used to have teachers coming to PD on Saturdays to work on math and to think about their instruction. So then last year and this year, we really had a fourth grade focus. And what that means, I've alluded to it, what that means is that there's a connected arc of professional development for our fourth and fifth grade teachers, including Tuesday sessions, including the district PD days, developed and facilitated by our math Tosa team who works in the classroom every single day with these students and teachers. We've developed this common curriculum. We have, as Pam spoke about, been working much more over the past few years in collaboration with our special ed department and our multi-services team to really think about wrapping around our students and best supporting them. We also, as, as I was sharing, you know, our curriculum is more than our adopted text. Our adopted text, as you know, in elementary is the, is ZERN. And our math team in collaboration with teachers over the last few years has built out a program that goes beyond just that digital component. So here's a visual of our daily math block. You've heard some of our teachers talking about the math mindset routine. This is the first part of the math block each day. It's about a 10-minute routine whose purpose is to impact the student's math identity. We want our students to feel confident when they're doing math. We want them to see themselves and others as valuable contributors to the mathematical learning in the classroom. We want to provide opportunity for academic discourse, for them to speak and to hear other students describing their thinking. We then go into a facilitated concept exploration portion of the lesson. This might be an activity that involves manipulatives, involves talking with their group members or, you know, maybe doing a card sort, something that supports collaboration and oral expression about the ideas that they're thinking of. The next portion of the math block is that independent digital lesson, which provides students with an online teacher and guided notes so that students can get some of that direct instruction. Some of our students need that and so they can, you know, go through that work. The minimum that we ask our classrooms to have is three times a week so that we can also lean into those more collaborative activities that we know support all learners to excel. And then the last portion of the daily block is the lesson synthesis.
So the last time we were together, we did a presentation, it was a NUS study session with the board meeting where we talked about some of the digital components. And I know ZERN came up a little bit as feeling, maybe there's too much online, how much are we using it? So as a team, we talked a lot about, where are we concerned? Because we get feedback from teachers too and we get feedback from parents and board around. And so, you know, we, we really thought, oh, that was this one, thought it was next. Oh, we're gonna go to this one, so that's fine, we're okay. We're gonna go right to it, because, yeah. So, so we've really been thinking through that. And, and we, we, you know, when we look at our math program, we look at it as a holistic, so it's not just the ZERN, it's that whole block. So when we think about the strategic plan and the mission vision around math, we want to make sure whatever program we're using is really nested in that. I think, you know, ZERN is something that we, we purchased during the pandemic and we leaned heavily on the, the digital component of it. You know, over the years, we've been trying to lighten up on that digital component, but it's, you know, it's still being used. I think what our program has really allowed for us to do over the last couple of years that are wins for us in our district, when we think about the elementary work leading into kind of like the middle school work being a little bit ahead of the elementary, is we've been able to really develop a really strong scope and sequence, similar to what middle school does where teachers are curating it. Teachers are putting things in there so they're, there's, that they feel like I can use this piece, they're giving feedback around it. It's the, the ZERN digital in particular really allowed us to see, wait, what are the standards? Because we remember when we came out of the pandemic, there was a lot of talk about going back grade level. So it really nested us back in, this is the grade level math and how do we scaffold to support? We, the math mindset routines, which we talk about a lot, you hear teachers talk about a lot, has been one of the routines that we've built from that, not necessarily part of ZERN, but that we've built from that, that's in the teacher curated area. And then really, we, we've been, and I know you mentioned that you're about the vis, the visual representations. We really want to see our elementary students being able to solve problems in multiple ways. So one thing that we want to share tonight with the board and we'll be sharing, you know, soon with our team is we recognize too that we are ready to, in elementary, to look for a new math curriculum. So we're going to be starting that process a little bit this spring and we can share more if you have questions around kind of what that process looks like. But you always start with a teacher selection committee. So we're excited about that. We're excited that we believe in elementary, our teachers are really ready and capable to know what worked, what's currently worked in our math program and the successes that we've seen from implementing a math mindset routine, from really doing concept exploration. You know, there are lots of digital components in math curriculum that's out there, but we recognize like what we might be looking for if we're still looking for something like that. So we're really excited about it, just a big announcement, that's why I first skipped ahead to someone to share with you. And, you know, and Amy and I and the math team and our elementary teachers will be engaged in that over the next about year and a half. So what's next? So what's next for us, and this is Kate, is we want to make sure that we're continuing to have outreach with our community around our math work, with our students, with our families, because they're the ones that after they're with us all day, that our kids go home to. We want to continue the love of math during the school day and at home and with our educators. Again, we want to review elementary curriculum adoptions, we're excited about that. We're going to make sure it aligns to the new math framework and again, is nested in the mission and vision. Because we always want to make sure that in all of our classrooms, that there is, and I think you mentioned joy and of course I looked over Amy's head and I see joy written up there. We want math to be joyful, not just for students, but also for our teachers too, because teaching is an art. So we want to make sure any curriculum that we look for is nested in those beliefs. We want to make sure we continue to monitor our eighth grade data in particular because it's really important for us as a system to know that when students have been with us, how they're leaving us and getting ready for higher education. And then we want to continue to have systems to support the teaching and learning in our district. And that includes systems of support, like some of our Tosas, our work with, our work with principals, our assessment that we're always looking at data, I know I skipped over. We do have a CFA with elementary as well. This is a single site example, teachers do get together, as Julie and Yara mentioned, to score that data. And then we also, which is really important to us, we want to see how students feel about their self as mathematicians. So we do a math mindset survey for third through eighth graders each year. And that's another data point, because it's one thing to take the CASP, it's one thing to take the CFA, but we also want to make sure that we're hitting the SCL piece of math as well. And with that, thank you, we talked a lot and we really appreciate us getting to talk about math with you.
Well, thank you very much for this wonderful presentation. And I was very lucky to attend the math summit that we recently had. And what an amazing site. We were able to visit a classroom and every student in that classroom was able to answer, engage. It was an amazing site and I was very lucky to meet Gigi. Yeah, it was good to see Gigi, the Penguin go to the classrooms and the kids were, you know, really excited. It was nice. So I want to turn it over to the board.
You can only see her over here.
I, I do want to just call, we do have some folks who joined us. I know we had a public comment period at the beginning, but I would recommend that we open up the comments more time. You've heard, you know, a really wonderful presentation, we want to give our guests an opportunity in person and then maybe online.
Absolutely, thank you. I guess, well, would you like to start with the, the public?
Yeah, let's start with the in-person.
Actually, I hadn't done public comment yet and I was waiting to go again, so you're there.
Hi, my name's Christina and I'm in eighth grade math at Bayside. And I just like to share a little bit about the math program. So last week, we finished up our previous unit and our teacher told us that we'd be reviewing the area of a rectangle. We ended up reviewing it for an entire week, even though we've been doing it since third grade. I actually have my old third grade ZERN workbook here, remembering finding the area of a rectangle using multiplication. And I feel that if kids still do not understand this math after five years of doing it, that the curriculum might not be doing its job. And so I've been taught numerous methods for solving problems, including tape diagrams, number lines, double number lines, number bonds. And this list goes on. But one thing is that they all have in common is that they're all visual methods of showing the same thing. And visual methods don't work for everyone. Ask pretty much anyone in my friend group and they'll all say that they work a lot better with numbers. So our curriculum is not a one size fits all situation because a lot of different people learn in a lot of different methods. And I feel that even if we have different ways of showing something visually, the visual method is not the only way that we should express the math. Also, having students of all levels in one class together, it doesn't really help anyone. Because students with a higher mathematical understanding, they, I know they're not really learning much. And the students with a lower mathematical understanding, they really don't understand the concepts and they're left super confused and they feel really bad that they're holding other people behind. They're asking a lot of questions and it's just not a very happy, like, situation for everyone. So two things that can be done about this. First, you, we can have in our curriculum, a, some more traditional methods of like teaching math, not only visuals, but also incorporating more numbers into the way that we're representing our math. And also we can allow kids to move on past grade level. Once they've exceeded the grade level standard, once they've shown complete proficiency in all of the grade level areas, I feel that they should be allowed to move on and not be held back. Thank you.
Do we have any more public comments in the audience?
Go ahead and take public comment online, we'll go ahead. Joel, can you please check to see if there are any public comment online?
Checking. There's three public comments. Hi, Katie, you ready?
Hi, you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, all. My name is Katie Diak and I'm a parent of two children in the Foster City School District, as well as an educator at a title one school in our district. I'm calling you to make a comment on the math strategies and math education in middle school in support of the strategic plan. In 2020, 2021, I recall staying up late into the wee hours of our evening, listening to the math discussion about middle school math pathways at the board meetings. My friends thought I was crazy for doing so, as these meetings would run for five plus hours and I only had a daughter in second grade, so why did I care about middle school math? Well, because I knew it would affect my child in the future. I wanted to make it equitable for all students and I was worried these changes wouldn't do that. I suspected then that the changes that were being made to the math pathways at that time would have a big impact on my daughter when she reached middle school and they have tremendously. It has been four years since those late night meetings and my daughter is now a sixth grader at Bayside. She has been in the GATE program since fourth grade, where she was challenged greatly in math for fourth and fifth grades and grew to love math. As she was learning to love math, we noticed a few things. Her confidence grew, it brought out a friendly competition in her spirit. She joined the parent-run schools math club. She became more innovative and she started talking about careers that involve the use of math. Her love for math is now dwindling and as a sixth grader at Bayside, where no differentiated classes exist, I see a girl who is now feeling like the system is failing her, feeling so much boredom that she wants to jump out of a window. Feeling defeated by the lack of teachers and staff willing to listen to them and how they feel. We both feel that math education is not equitable and it's all, anything but a challenge and is causing my daughter to hate math. I want to rebuild the love for math in her, but the program is doing quite the opposite. I want to remind all that the second goal in the strategic plan is equity for all students. The heterogeneous model might be working for some students, but it's not working for all students, including my daughter and many of her peers. Holding back the high performers by forcing them to keep repeating work that they have already mastered is not acceptable, because the school is effectively punishing one group of students in their attempt to help the other group. This is inequitable and unnecessary. Thank you.
The next speaker is Ling He. Hi Ling He, are you ready?
So I'll have my daughter speak first and I'll go next person. Go ahead and.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Adalina Lee. I'm a sixth grader in Bayside Academy Gate class. I'm here because I'm really bored in my math class. I'm not allowed to learn other math in the math class and all the work is really repetitive. In January, five months into the school year, the sixth grade class was still being taught eight divided by two and that's basic division. And instead of moving forward, we were forced to draw color-coded diagrams and go through pointless exercises to deepen our understanding. It was beyond frustrating. Throughout the school year, there's more than 130 hours wasted on this math. If I put those 130 hours to ice skating, I could already do four double jumps. If I put it to writing, I would be done with my book. But guess what? We put it to six divided by three and the teachers don't seem to realize the effect a math class has on our mental health. People, one of them me, have cried out of frustration. We complain every day about it. And research shows that when students feel unchallenged in school, it leads to increased stress, lack of motivation, and a negative attitude towards learning. I can confirm that this is all math class has given me. With so many people complaining, at some point you have to realize that something is wrong. Here's my solution to the problem. Students like us can be routinely tested and if we pass the curriculum, then we can do our own math in the class. We can sit in a corner and work at our own pace doing Khan Academy or other math programs. This will help us actually learn in this class while our teachers reduce work and stress. It's a win-win. We won't be bored anymore while our teachers' burdens are reduced. I don't see why this solution isn't accepted. Thank you. It's only two minutes.
Can I get an extra three minutes? Thank you. Okay, thank you. Hi, my name is Ling He and I'm a parent of Adalina Lee, sixth grader in Bayside Gate class, who has spoke just now. My other daughter definitely is a fifth grader at the College Park immersion program. I'm also a math coach in both schools. I'm calling to make a comment on the middle school math curriculum, heterogeneous grouping math class program and how the math class is run to cater the lower achieving kids only. I'm here because I'm very concerned about Adalina's happiness. She has become dreading math class and the school and she used to love math classes in elementary school. So based on Adalina's statements, we summarize that the curriculum is too easy. The students are extremely good and they're not allowed to learn any other math that is not part of the curriculum. Why is my child not allowed to learn more? After two meetings with the teachers, principal, and Amy Burke, here, this district math coordinator, I was told by the principals that the school district board requires the teachers to follow the standard curriculum strictly. So I would really want the board to clarify whether there is a specific rule that the teacher can only teach the standard curriculum to the students and the students aren't allowed to learn any other math in the class, even on their own. As for the mixed grouping math classes for Gate students, I asked Amy in a meeting and her answer was, quote, "We believe that mixing higher achieving students with lower achieving students is beneficial to the whole group." According to my research, she is right if the program is implemented correctly. However, our math curriculum and math teachers misses the following two points. The class tasks should be open-ended. Therefore, it solves both the low floor and the high ceiling problems. For example, a problem like a design garden with area of 24 square units is open-ended. A problem like four divided by three is not. The teacher should implement personalized learning pathways. Research supports the idea of personalized learning where students work on tasks tailored to their current level. The teacher can provide additional resources or challenges for advanced students, such as math puzzles, online platforms, or independent projects. So with that, I'm presenting my three requests. All math teachers should permit and facilitate the use of alternative educational resources like Khan Academy for students who complete the assigned task early. Two, advanced and creative curriculum and projects should be designed for higher achieving students. Three, the school district should conduct students, teacher, parents survey regarding the benefits of heterogeneous math classrooms. We started the program four years ago. It is time to get evaluated. So that's all I have to say. Thank you for your attention.
Joel, is that the last?
Yeah, it looks like Katie has her head up. Do you want to first speak?
Again? Yes, go ahead and let him speak again.
Hi Katie.
Hi. So my name is Penny Diak and I'm a current student at Bayside taking math six. However, I have some issues with the current curriculum. I consider myself a faster learner than others and I want to learn math. I want to go ahead and try new things. I want to learn and understand new strategies on my level. However, this current math curriculum doesn't let me do that. I'm so happy that you're catering to all these students at all these different demographics, but you're leaving out one, students who understand the basics of math six. I feel left to sit there doing nothing and waiting. We wait and wait and wait, only for our task to be either something we did the day before or something that's already understood. Someone earlier mentioned that we're always doing something. However, I don't agree with this in the slightest. There's so much wait time, either from waiting for kids to solve the problem or waiting for kids to quiet down and listen to the teacher. I have sat there waiting for countless hours. Those hours could have been spent on learning so much more, such as concepts I don't already understand. I have nothing to do at all, however, just waiting and waiting and waiting. Clearly, those who state we're challenged and always have work to do have never been in those classes. I'm so glad you want to challenge everyone and teach in a new way for all students, but this plan needs to be rethought. I don't have anything to do. I am stuck in this math class and I'm not learning anything. Learning is the point of school. I want to do something so fundamentally basic, the whole reason I'm at school, but I'm told, no, you can't do that. That's not what we're trying to teach you right now. That doesn't feel fair at all. There are 860 and a half tiles on my math teacher's ceiling. I calculated this during the wait time, just sitting there, waiting to move on and learn something that new, learn something that would challenge me, learn something at my level. Again, I'm not upset at anyone for catering the curriculum to students who don't understand the material yet. However, a whole demographic is left out. This is why I urge you to rethink your math curriculum and let everyone have a voice in what they learn and how they learn. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, one thing, I'm just noticing there's 24 people in our Zoom. Does everybody on Zoom know how to raise their hand or they know how to sign up to speak? Because we only had three speakers out of 24. Are those teachers or other observers on the call?
There's one more, Wendy Hill. Hi Wendy, you're ready?
Hi. Hi, everybody. Thank you for your attention this evening. I wanted to speak up as a parent of a student who is not in the Gate program, but who is in sixth grade in the district. And I want to go ahead and echo some of the concerns that you've heard from the students who were part of the Gate program and the parents. I don't think that these concerns are unique to students who went through the Gate program. I think that these types of concerns, the undifferentiated curriculum that's being taught, especially at the sixth grade level, I can't speak beyond because I don't have experience with seventh and eighth grade. It's not serving the needs of all of our students and I think that we need to have some serious discussions about what needs to happen to serve needs of students who are indeed bored and losing interest not only in math, but in school as a result of our math program. Thank you.
No more public comments.
Clarifying questions from the board. One clarifying question I would like to ask is regarding the curriculum and the understanding that when a student is at a level where they have kind of where the teacher is at with the class, that they are allowed to go a little deeper and, you know, be able to expand in the curriculum that we do have. Are you able to talk about how the curriculum can be expanded upon by the teacher if they do have some advanced students?
Sure. So I can start and then Amy, you can certainly add on. So one of the activities that we started our presentation with tonight was very basic in terms of low floor, but you also got a chance to see the extension activities. So those extension activities are embedded in the curriculum and they are accessible for students who are ready to go deeper. One of the things Amy mentioned when she was describing that is that teachers know their students and so the expectation is that they select those extension activities and prompt the student, you can do this particular part or you can do this particular part. So that is what's embedded in our lessons and that's the expectation in terms of going deeper and really challenging students who are ready for that next step. Yeah, I don't know that I'd add more than that there, other than to say that we know that there's a depth, even there's there's this concept of to get ahead, I need to go faster through math content. Whereas part of the reframe that we're working on, our California framework is working on and the Common Core standards we're working on, is it's not necessarily about going faster through topics, it's about going deeper. And so your question about like what in the curriculum allows that is, you know, exactly the type of example that you saw. And then the conversations that Dana referenced in their coaching, like we have more veteran teachers working with less veteran teachers and our more veteran teachers do have those questions in their back pocket. They're able to see, you know, oh, I have a student who needs something different and they have those sort of prompts at the ready. Whereas of course, when you're, you know, when you're a newer teacher, you're still learning that. You're still learning, how can I go deeper with this content and with these students?
Okay, one additional, oh, I'm sorry, is it?
I'm sorry, I just.
I just saw Dana nodding her head a lot, so I think Dana should chime in here in a second. But one thing that I think is important to talk about because we're a K eight school district is, I think as a parent myself, and I know some of the folks that I've talked to in this room over the last five years, we want to make sure that our kids are ready for that next step, for those Hillsdale math classes and math classes at Sematary High. Amy Burke and I actually, our professional relationship goes back, was it 2012, 2013? Amy was one of the three math teachers at Berkeley High School and I did the accreditation visit at that school. It seems like a long time ago.
Doesn't seem that long ago to me.
But I think it's important to talk about that because we actually have many of our math educators and Amy is just one of them who have taught high school. And I think the interesting thing about that sort of vertical experience is seeing like what it means to have math learners that have depth of knowledge and that haven't rushed through curriculum. And I think years ago, back when we had 172 kids taking algebra, we were in a hurry to get kids through math. So we didn't talk about it in this presentation and sometimes I wonder like we can only fit so much into an hour. But we used to combine sixth and seventh grade math into one day. And one of the disadvantages of doing that is, actually, we used to do a lot of stuff. The way we did it was it was kind of like just chopping classes and forcing it in to a shorter amount of time. And kids lose a lot that way and it becomes more about coverage than it becomes about depth of knowledge. So our thesis, and we should say like this is our sort of, it's our belief, but it's also based on research. It's based in teaching science. It's not like my personal opinion or Amy's personal opinion. And I think we can always do better. Like I'm just the type to be like, we can, I did a read aloud in Paris for today, so I know I can do better than I did this morning, right? Like every single lesson we do is an opportunity and Dana, you will sleep over this and your problem is new and you are working as teams because you want to improve the science. So when I hear our young people say like, I'm really, really bored, that doesn't make me feel like, oh, we've got it all figured out. No, we have to like sit with kids and think about it and, you know, like you said, they have tools at the ready. Like let's go check it. Let's go spend time. Let's kind of go deeper into this work. Because I think in the end, we want not just constant math learners, we want like really engaged.
Yeah, absolutely. I would go a lot of what's been said. No, I agree and I appreciate you alluding back to that framework as our guidance document as a shift with backed by, you know, a lot of different research that informs of rich and multi-dimensional math experience for our learners. And we understand that a lot of math classrooms now look and feel very different from how even I experienced math as a student. And we understand that there's a lot of consensus building and, you know, making sense of that together and helping everyone understand what that means and what that looks like. But I have every confidence in my team. I work really closely with a lot of the sixth grade math teachers and Bayside's my home. I landed at Bayside. I taught at Bayside for eight years and I was at Bayside when we made this shift to math six for all. And that was the first year when we had this release time for teachers. So I was one of the authors of a curriculum designed to support all math learners at Bayside in sixth grade, including Gate students and non-Gate students. And I know that the interests of bringing everyone together and creating that rich math experience for all really was very central and we were always asking, how do we differentiate within a task? How do we allow for one community to grapple with all kinds of different ways and things? And I appreciate Amy's examples of the cups and the high ceiling questions. We craft questions like that for every single task. Every single day, we ask, how far can kids take this? That's a core tenet of what teachers want to support and we make available on a regular basis. And I, you know, it breaks my heart to hear that not all of our families and communities are feeling that. But I know that teachers are active, you know, participants in this work and really do want the best for our learners. And so I, yeah, would just echo our continued curiosity. I know that we worked on building that four years ago and I know every year the team continues to iterate and improve. So I know that they're eager to continue doing so and I also have a lot of confidence in their skill set, their compassion, and their curiosity about this work.
Thank you. I just want to quickly just make a comment about, we'll do comments and questions at the same time. Is that okay for each of our? Okay, I just want to quickly make a comment that if we can really check in with the teachers and identify students who are in need of a greater challenge and figure out a way that we can give the teachers the tools and support them more in their rooms to challenge our students who are need. Thank you.
I have a question and I have a comment too. So my question first is, you know, I really appreciated hearing, you know, from both school sites, right, you know, kind of that special relationship that's happening between teachers and TOSSAs and especially supporting new teachers. I think that's wonderful to see, to hear about. I wanted to ask, you know, what sites have TOSSAs?
I wanted to ask, you know, what sites have TOSSAs, which ones don't? How does it get chosen? Because TOSSAs don't exist at every single site. Are, you know, so I guess one, how does a site get chosen to get a TOSA or not? Because it sounds like such a rich valuable resource and something that I would ideally want for allotted communities. And then also, you know, is there data behind it? Are the sites with TOSSAs doing better in math?
Amy to start? Great. And then Pam.
I like to talk elementary. Well, we are talking about elementary because otherwise.
Why don't you mention middle school and then I can talk like how that works in middle?
Middle school comprehensive sites do have release periods, so they don't have like a full, you know, human out of the classroom type of situation. So that, you know, we wanted Dana here because she is an example of exactly what's happening at our four comprehensive sites. At our K through eight sites, the Montessori sites, we do have some math TOSA support that is specifically at that site. And then in our elementary work, this is where we have some folks splitting like a math TOSA who split between two sites or some sites that do not right now have support. And part of that is due to the resource that we have available to hire for these positions. And then the determination about where we placed our math TOSSAs was based on where we saw the highest need. So we did use data to inform the decisions. So you will see at our Title I sites, those are the spaces where we have a full-time TOSA. And then at our sites where, you know, our data from CASP, from CFA is showing that there is less targeted support needed, we have less. We would love to have math TOSA support at each site, but, you know.
Yeah. And I think, you know, this, especially in elementary work, I mentioned like, you know, we start, we only, we started with only a handful and we were able to grow the team over this year. And when we think about that, we're transforming teaching and learning, that work takes a lot of time. So I don't know if we could point to, you know, right just yet, our Title I schools, like this has made this difference because we're trying to get in the classrooms, but I think this is the the work that we kind of see over the years that's going to make the big difference. But we did, when we kind of, when we chose, it was really database and we saw where's the greatest need. So when, you know, when we think about the MTSS, the tier one, like which schools have the majority of students that maybe on the CASP and up to grade warrant meeting or exceeding the largest numbers? That's where we put a full-time TOSA. But all of the, and in elementary, all the TOSA teams, they also, they're at their school sites, but they're also on a district team. So they also support wherever the support needed, sometimes it's with carrying the curriculum or providing professional development. They all take part of that piece too.
All right. And just a point, we shared with you previously some of the interim assessment data. So one of the groups this past year, both in our interim assessment data and our CASP last year that showed tremendous progress in mathematics was our so-called socio-economically disadvantaged students. And by definition, when we're talking about the so-called Title I sites, what we're really saying is these are the sites that have a higher percentage of students from struggling economic backgrounds. And so when we see the kind of growth we're getting in that group and we think about our math strategy of, you know, to be equitable means some schools get more to provide support for students who have the need. We're seeing that impact, I think. So I just wanted to connect that to the data that we've shared with you. And actually, next board meeting, we'll be bringing back to you in the mid-year group.
Okay, time for comments as well, or should I?
Yes.
Other people's questions as well?
Go ahead and do your comment as well. We're going to swing it all in there together.
Okay, great. And I wrote these comments down because I didn't want to miss anything. So if you don't mind, I'm going to go ahead and read from it. I usually don't like to be so rabid. I really, you know, I appreciate the presentation today and hearing about the different math pathways. I do want to encourage us to think about these pathways in a slightly different way. I strongly believe that families absolutely need access to algebra in all middle schools. Right? So currently, right now, there is not algebra in the pre-K through eight schools. So currently, for example, North Shoreview, Parkside, last board meeting, we heard from the Fiesta Garden parent community, a couple of parents from the community sharing about kind of that tension for themselves of not wanting to stay at Fiesta Gardens if algebra wasn't being offered. They felt like they were being, they're, they're kind of stuck between a rock and a hard place and having to choose between a bilingual program that they opted into and that they're a rich part of that community. Yet, you know, they they feel that they have to make a choice between that or college preparatory classes. And this is a struggle that, you know, as a North Shoreview parent myself and also, you know, families in Parkside have been feeling for years. I believe that if we want our pre-K through eight magnet programs to have robust, sustainable programs with committed families, we need to have pathways for algebra at these schools. Adding algebra into the pre-K through eight schools will not only increase the number of kids enrolled in algebra, but I believe it is importantly, more importantly aligned with our district value of equity. Families who have education, resources and knowledge of college expectations are paying for courses or additional resources outside of school so that their kids can complete algebra by the time they get to high school. And this creates, as you can imagine, an even greater equity gap. Algebra, as we all know here, all math experts in this room, you know, is a major gatekeeper and especially I see it in selective college readiness without it in eighth grade. And without someone in the high school level, could be a parent, could be a caring educator or even an individual student advocating for themselves and pushing to take a double math in high school or, you know, kind of to advance themselves. They will not get into a highly selective college. And I say this as one of the Bay Area's leading experts in college admissions counseling. If students don't get to pre-calculus by senior year, they're pretty much, their chances of getting into a highly selective college is completely gone. As a result, I would like to see the algebra be made available at all middle schools across the district. We in education, and I say this as a fellow educator myself, I strongly believe that we should not be gatekeepers, that we should be gate openers. I believe that, you know, if we open the gates for our middle schoolers, we will see, you know, four, five, six years down the line when they are hearing back from their colleges, opening algebra allows them the chance of being admitted to a highly selective college and being competitive applicants, especially in STEM fields. As we all know, you know, we live in Silicon Valley, right? STEM fields have some of the highest income salaries, not even in the nation, in the world. And I believe opening access to higher education and higher income starts with college prep courses such as algebra and it starts here in the K through eight system. Superintendent Ochoa, I would like to, I would like you to convene a meeting with your esteemed team of experts to figure out a way to how we can make this happen starting in 2025, 2026 school year. I would love to talk with you about this a little bit more when we meet in two weeks. Along these same lines, when I went on my board visit to Burrell a few weeks ago, I loved visiting that double math class, right, that we were talking about and seeing before my eyes a living pathway to algebra in our district. And I was really encouraged and glad to hear from Executive Director Kenyatta Cook about the work being done at the district level behind the scenes, right? Things that people aren't getting to see necessarily to increase enrollment of underrepresented minorities in algebra. Yet, at the same time, I strongly believe we need to do better. If 41% of our district identify as Hispanic or Latinx, 41% of the kids in that algebra class should also be Hispanic or Latinx. And putting it bluntly, that is not what I saw in that classroom. I believe the district needs to ask themselves some hard questions. Superintendent Ochoa, I would, I'm asking you to evaluate, you know, what, what does it look like in the third, fourth and fifth grade math classrooms? And I want to, you know, see it disaggregated across schools, across different populations and to ask ourselves, are we truly and adequately preparing our students to succeed when they hit sixth, seventh and eighth grade math? What do we need to change? What do we need to improve? Who are we serving and who are we not serving? And if we are not placing kids in algebra because of fear that they won't succeed, we need to create pathways and interventions prior to middle school to make sure that when they get there, that they are prepared. I want to challenge all of us to see that if we don't create structures of equity in our schools, we will continue seeing the same inequitable outcomes that we've always seen. Thanks.
I have a lot of questions. I'll let you go first, Tristi Parker.
Okay, just my thoughts, but um, I don't, I forgot what my question was, but it might come back to me. But I do want to talk a little bit about some of the comments we heard. I think, okay, one of my questions was, we've heard from Bayside and we, we heard from another group of people with similar comments maybe a year or two years ago. I don't know if it was also Bayside, but I know a lot of people, North Shore, okay. I know a lot of people came to talk about math before and I couldn't remember what school. What kind of supports did we give to that school at that time to kind of get through some of the feedback we were hearing? And how can we help? We're hearing from Bayside tonight. I'm sure there's other, maybe there's other schools, but how can we help with that school, make sure the students are getting what they need?
Well, I know, yeah, I know you were just over at Bayside, right?
Yeah, I actually have a meeting tomorrow with the two math six teachers. Because we had, you know, one of the, yeah, we, we've been in beginning this conversation with our families and our students around this. So I have the opportunity to go meet with the teachers tomorrow. We've also met at Bayside with the site leader and the coach there. She's also a teacher. And she has already increased her time in the classrooms and working, as I was saying earlier, with those back pocket questions with the teachers and just thinking together about making sure that students are more engaged in the lesson. We also talked about, you know, what changes might we need to do? Not changes, but what additions and extensions might we need to do within the curriculum to make sure that we have those at the ready for our students? And I do think, you know, Superintendent Ochoa alluded to this, but I think that, you know, really having some listening sessions like with individual students to really hear their perspective feels like a really valuable next step so that we, as a system, can make sure that we are addressing the concerns that come up.
Chloe, I was gonna say, I know with, I think it was North Shore, I don't remember the exact name with North Shore, but what I do know is they have hired a math coach in their whole professional development over the last year, maybe more. It's been focused on math and in the Montessori kind of realm. So not, so kind of thinking about like, how do we take the math that we're doing but fit it to Montessori? So I know that's been a big, and that may have, I'm not remembering exactly, but that may have come.
Students coming.
Yeah, that might have come from some of that.
Yeah, that was part of it, for sure. And I was, you know, I was a parent at the time and part of that movement. And, you know, so there was that, there was the Montessori math component, but there's also that push again for algebra and the pathways. And that was definitely a big focus.
Some of my comments are just based on things that I heard tonight. And so I just want to share, I guess, how I'm feeling about things. I'm never going to agree that we should separate kids based on, like, some people being high achieving and some people being low achieving. I think you, like, where do you draw the line? Like, in English, should we put like the, the weak readers in a different classroom than the strong readers? In PE, should we put the athletic kids in one group and put the non-athletic kids in another? So I really feel like we should, you know, find ways to challenge kids that need to be challenged more and give support to kids that need it. So, you know, that comment that came up a couple of times, I can't support it. I also don't really think that, you know, in classrooms, kids should, when they're, when they learned everything they can learn, that they should go get on a computer and, and learn by themselves. I mean, there's more to school than just like, okay, check, I, I'm done, I'm going to move on on my own. So I, again, back to my comment of just making sure that everybody's feeling like they are getting what they need out of their classrooms is what is most important to me. I think Amy, back when we were talking about the math pathways originally, you or somebody had made a comment that the recommendation to accelerate is actually really later in high school. You know, and so making, making comments that say, you know, if you don't take algebra early enough, you're not going to be able to get into a high, highly selective college. I think there's a lot of ways in high school to, to accelerate. There's a lot of kids that want to do different pathways in life and I don't want to, I don't want to say, me personally as a school board member, that if you didn't do algebra here, you're not gonna, your future is like limited. I, I think that kids have lots of opportunities to, to excel and I believe in all of them. And I think that everybody learns at a different pace. And so that's my theory and how I feel about things. I'm not an expert in college coaching or anything like that, but, you know, I know kids learn at different paces. So I want to be supportive of all the students. Otherwise, I think you mentioned the ZARN curriculum. Just wondering, are we looking at anything for middle schools or just the elementary school curriculum?
Yeah, the middle school, yeah, we're not looking right yet. We're mostly going to focus on elementary.
Those are my comments and questions. Thank you for tonight. It was, yeah.
Thank you.
I'm going to apologize in advance because I have a few different things I want to run through. But I did want to start off with the middle school curriculum in particular. I think just for our benefit, because we didn't have Common Core standards when we were all going through school. Can you quickly summarize what is Common Core Math Six versus Math Seven versus Math Eight? Like what buckets of knowledge? Because we know what algebra is. We know what geometry is. We know trigonometry is. When you talk about these middle school pathways, can you give us a sense of what falls in each bucket at a very high level?
Yeah.
What jumped out of my ears is the statement that we know what algebra is because we actually even have to question that, right? So when Common Core was adopted, they actually shifted formerly high school standards. The Algebra II class of, of, of what used to be in high school is now split between Algebra I and eighth grade. So take a second and think about that. I took a class that was called Algebra when I was in seventh grade. Now it is just seventh grade math. So every seventh grader who's currently taking seventh grade math is learning what I used to learn as a class called Algebra. So even that right away, like at the time, and this was in my first few years here in the district, there was a lot of confusion with families saying, my older kids take algebra, my younger kids should take algebra. But when the standards moved, the course names stayed the same, but the mathematics that our eighth graders are doing used to be ninth and 10th grade mathematics, as recently as folks who were going through high school in 2012. So I wanted to start by naming that. Yeah, absolutely. So big ideas, I mean, I don't want to go into all the big ideas documents. I can point you to the framework where they're nicely organized. But one thing that I think comes up in the sixth grade experience is that sixth grade does a lot of work with equivalent ratios and multiple representations of that because that's a foundational building block for proportional reasoning in seventh grade and linear relationships in eighth grade. And what we find is equivalent ratios are really dependent on patterns of multiplication and division. And to students, it might feel familiar as if we've learned how to multiply and divide before because that was the, the content back in fourth, fifth, you know, previous grades. But the applications of it, the problem solving with it, the math practices and structures and like systems around it might use the same mathematical tools from before, but in new ways. And that can be kind of confusing for students when things look familiar and they miss the nuance of what's new to it. So that's, I think, something worth potentially highlighting. And the reason that teachers in sixth grade push on such a robust understanding of that equivalence is because that gut intuition and sense around equivalence is so foundational for understanding proportional relationships and then eventually slope in their eighth grade and algebraic years. So that's, I think, the big one that's probably coming up most at that sixth grade level is all of their elementary years, we were talking about this earlier, actually, in their elementary years, students are constantly unlocking sort of new types of numbers. There's a day you learn that fractions exist. There's a day that you learn that decimals exist. There's a day that you learn negatives exist. And in the sixth grade, there's no new types of numbers in sixth grade material. So it might feel like there's fewer new pieces of it, but the applications and connections are still often very new. And so that's like, yeah, just what came to mind for this. And I want to mention the algebra piece. But yeah, I would say like that equivalence and ratio is core in sixth grade, proportional relationships and multiple representations of it. And then linear going into linear quadratics and exponentials and that algebra course.
Which again, when I was teaching just a few years back at Berkeley High School, teaching Algebra II, we were doing exponential growth, you know, transformations of the quadratic. Like those were Algebra II content. Now they're in Algebra I. So like, that's a very big shift to note. I also want to note, because I see that you're writing on, it's on the pathways slide right now. We made a decision that students could show proficiency in Math Seven on purpose because we looked at the Because we looked at the standards in Math Six, we looked at the standards in Math Seven, and we saw an overlap. There is a depth, of course, that students go into in Math Seven that is not there in Math Six. But there is a big overlap, it's around um, ratios and proportional reasoning, um, those are foundational for Math Eight. And Math Eight is not, we wanna, you know, we feel a responsibility to our community, our students. That we set that foundation really strong for all of our students, so that's why you'll see. That option um, was made very carefully in that year and in no other spaces.
So I was gonna ask about that, cause it seems like, based on the pathway we've set up, we are under the assumption that. Math Seven isn't necessarily something that has to be taught in the classroom, that they can test out of, but it seems like we're insisting that Math Six is not. Something that can be tested out of, and I understand, based on the explanation you've given, that it's supposed to be that foundational, and it's kind of essential that every student gets it right. But just, I guess, hearing students come in on a Thursday night complaining about the level of difficulty of their math class, asking for more challenges. Is a very depressing and appalling thing to hear, as a trustee, and I'm sure for every educator in the room, and so. I think the way this, the rigid pathways that we have set up, and I understand we've offered multiple pathways. I do think that's something that we've had to explain over and over, I don't know that. We've done a good job of conveying our logic or reasoning behind it, I do understand the baseline matters more, it's easier to skip later on a more complex topic. If you are on the same page on the baseline, but I think to the earlier comments, having the ability to go deeper on. I believe we called it extension activities, um, and to really develop mastery, and I I will make one comment, I think students said earlier. About the visual representations, when Common Core rolled out, that was a universal comment, this is not the way we learn math, it's different, it's not plug and chug, it's not drill and kill. Um, I understand that, and to be honest, I personally hated visual representations when I was a younger student, I now understand how that actually helps you. To have multiple ways to solve a problem, and as you deal with more complex problems, it can be helpful. But at the same time, I don't think that level of frustration that we've heard from multiple students now is something that we can accept in our district. Um, and so I did wanna ask specifically, I see now to go from grade seven to grade eight, there is this counseling line, can you explain what that pathway is?
Mm-hmm, yeah, um, so, there is. That double math option is something that any student can elect into. So there is no proficiency testing happening here, we used to do that. We are not sorting and selecting and labeling our students, they ha- everyone can go into that. And we do that little counseling line there, because we do know our students, we have been gathering data about our students. For years up to this point, so, when we see, we, our um, middle schools are heading into their. Um, course selection process in the next few weeks, next month or so. Um, and we do support our school sites by asking them to send us a list of the students who are. Selecting into the double math course, and we run data next to it, and we say, we pull up all our data, we put. You know, CAS from your sixth grade and your seventh grade year, next to the student names, we pull up CFA, Common Formative Assessment Scores. Uh, all the data we have, we pull up your math mindset survey, we just wanna get a picture of who's electing into this class, we also. Pull up um, our student demographics, because we agree with you, we cannot agree with you more. The current state of who is accessing our highest level math course does not represent our student body. And that's a problem we're trying to solve, right, so we actually look at the students who've selected in, and then we also look at that full data set. And we do a second reach out to students who have um, been historically marginalized and are not looking at themselves and saying. Maybe I'll consider that double math class, and we actually work with our math teachers and the counselors at the sites.
Mm-hmm.
And there's some counseling there based in the data, and the counseling is a conversation. Hey, Jean, I see you selected double math, I wanna, you know, just share, we have this data over the past few years. I want you to know, you're you're gonna take math, an hour and a half of math every day, you're gonna have homework every night. Like, is this just the decision you wanna make? If it is, we're gonna support you, we have student conversations with other students, hey, Yara. I see you didn't select the double math class, look at all this data we have about you, you are, you are killing the game out here. I'm not gonna pressure you to take another math class if you don't want to, but I want you to know, we see you. As a strong mathematician, and we think you should consider this course, so that's kinda the counseling line.
Uh, so two questions on that, so, for the students who end up doing the grade six, demonstrated proficiency, go into Math Eight, that's a proficiency exam.
That one is, yes.
Is that an elective exam, or is every student in Math Six tested to see if they're ready for Math Eight?
Only students who are interested are taking that proficiency assessment.
When is the proficiency exam administered, is it during class time or offsite?
No, it's after school at the sites, it's on Wednesday and Fridays, when there's early release.
I guess, what is the rationale?
Stay in later to take that assessment, if they feel interested and prepared for um, going into Math Eight in there.
So given the challenges we face with certain families, childcare, flexibility, what was the rationale for having that administered outside of class time? I'm not, that's not to you, just to, to everybody here, because if we're about equity and expanding access. Why is the test only available after school to students who voluntarily choose to opt in, which means that their parents would have had to be engaged enough. To understand this pathway was available to them, I just, I wanna understand why we settled on that approach.
I do wanna share that we do send home um. Multiple communication to every sixth grade family that says, these are the pathways, we actually have a video. That walks through the pathways, um, it also talks through. You know, here's what high school math coursework looks like too, at all of the three high schools that we feed into in our district. So that we can really clearly show, you can still access uh, pre-calculus, A P Statistics, if you prefer, algebra in the ninth grade. We should, we talk through all that, we send a video home to every family explaining that, and we ask every single family. To let us know which pathway they're interested in, we also share a similar video. In every single Math Six classroom, cause not everyone has access to email and can. Watch a video online at their home, but we make sure that every single student um, sees that in their classroom. And knows that they need to go home and take the survey with their family member. Um, I, I suppose we could.
I, I'll add on to that, so, the survey is about, so, to answer your question about opening it up to all students. It's open up to all students when we send a video home to all sixth grade families about this option, when teachers talk about it in class. And then um, we pair it so that the student can then go home and talk to their parent about it, and they can elect to. Take the proficiency exam, uh, the reason why we don't have it in classroom, we think about instructional time, right? Instructional time is very valuable, and we have this additional option, it's not your only route to algebra. Because you still can elect to take it in eighth grade, that's the more accelerated route. But remember what Amy said in the very beginning, we actually recommend. Math Six in sixth grade, Math Seven in seventh grade, Math Eight in eighth grade, because you have plenty of opportunities, as you just mentioned. To accelerate in high school, so, it's not a hidden option, because we do send it out in our comms to all of our sixth grade families. It goes, it's talked about in class to teachers, and make sure students have the opportunity to wanna. Test and take the Math Seven proficiency, have that opportunity to do that. But that's not the only way, you still have a chance in algebra or in eighth grade to take algebra, if you wanna elect into it as one of your elective offerings.
I'm just gonna echo what I've heard from a lot of parents, which is that. Whether it's the exam to get into the GATE program or the exam to test into seventh grade math. Single exams, set at a time, that's not necessarily convenient. And oftentimes doesn't get relayed to parents, parents feel like between the barrage of emails they get or everything that's communicated, they've missed. It doesn't feel like we're meeting our equity goals by having such a rigid approach. That frankly, every year we get complaints about, so that's one comment I wanna make up at the top, on the counseling piece, I thought that was interesting, because it does sound like. We are affirmatively going out, for example, to underrepresented communities or folks who may not be confident but have that ability. But again, it's very selective, it's not, it's something you have to opt into, so if you were a student of least resistance, whose parents are both working. Not actively checking emails, you would be set on this standard six, seven, eight track regardless of your proficiency, and then you might end up being one of the students who she has to turn meeting. Basically feeling extremely frustrated that their. Level math proficiency isn't reflected in the type of work that they're being offered, even though we do offer it on our schools, but because. Either their parents didn't see the emails, may not speak English, or may not have got the email in a way that they can digest and appreciate. May have missed the date, may have childcare responsibilities that made it difficult for them to make sure that the child could sit down for an exam after school. It just, I can understand the frustration we get every year from the angry emails we get from parents, who weren't aware, they assume they put their child in our care. We will slot them in where they should be. And when you turn around and say, well, we put it in our board meeting, or we put out a flyer, or we sent you an email. I hundred percent empathize with the frustration we hear from our community, that that's a failure on our part, that we should have done better. In terms of making sure that they got the information, opening opportunities, offering makeup dates, it just, it feels unusually. Punitive to take that approach, again, for classes and coursework that we offer, but I know I'm taking up a lot of time, so I do wanna jump to some of my other comments and questions. I also wanna echo, I think, what trustee Ho said about the Montessori schools, again, a lot of the parents there have made similar complaints I've raised at a past board meeting. I will say even, I know, for example, at Parkside, and I believe North Shore View, um, a lot of the students or parents have pulled together to. Find summer classes for algebra, so that they're able to take that course before they go up, if we're gonna be very rigid about. Insisting that our Montessori programs do not deviate from the Montessori approach, then these parents have made that compromise to go elsewhere. But whether it's students commenting about Russian math, Singaporean math, outside math. Again, it doesn't feel right that we're essentially directing these parents and these families to use their own resources, their own time, and again, that self-selects for certain group people. Who are in the group chat, who are college educated, who understand the rigorous standards required to essentially find their own way in our district. I don't necessarily find that acceptable, and I think the comments we've received so far really do echo that. I think, again, the extension activities we talked about, I appreciate, oh, sorry, Diego, do you have a comment on that?
Oh, no, after you.
No, please.
Uh, I think we should also, um. You know, just make more time to get rooted in the data, I don't think um, conversations that. Apply to the entire district and the district structures and systems, for example, North Shore View and Parkside, going back at least six years and probably more. Um, did not offer algebra historically, so I don't think, that's an example of sort of. An equity um, conversation that we've had tonight, that isn't rooted. In a change in the pathway that resulted in less equity or less access, and as educators, we all want. Um, you know, twenty five, twenty six to be an improvement on twenty four. And so on and so forth, um, so I take things like. Um. Finding students uh, from uh, historically marginalized uh, communities. Um, I think the slide was, we had seven students in twenty one, twenty two who were, I mean, who took algebra, and we have fifty six or fifty nine this year. Um, I can do the math on what that is, I mean, it's not a minor thing. Um, is it forty one percent? No, but it's on the way, and I look at it as. I wanna have a conversation, and not me, I want this child's counselor and teacher. To have a conversation with the parent and say. What is best for this child, in some cases, the kids are at schools like Burrell, Abbott, Bayside, um, Valvich. And they wanna be in the chamber orchestra, and they want to take Spanish, and they don't wanna take too much. Um, in other cases, the idea of testing out of the class like Math Seven is uh, something that I'm not interested in doing. And I think that's the sweet spot, is of having our counseling and instructional team be so. Um, present and connected to families that um, as a district staff, we go, let's provide the support, let's do the PD. I think we thought at the time, the videos were a really good way for parents to be able to hear the information and not necessarily physically be. In a meeting, but I think even the videos, if you recall, Amy, that was sort of. Something we did our second year going, oh, the first year it didn't work, cause we held like live meetings, and we had a pretty small turnout that first year. So we said, well, let's record them and see what we get from them, um, but maybe it's a combination of live. In person, one-on-one counseling sessions to get really rooted in the data of, um. The other, the wave that's coming for us is mathematicians coming from the current third, fourth, and fifth grade who have. Dramatically different construction on a daily basis, and how those kids are gonna see themselves. Um, as math murders in middle school, I I know I have a thesis about that, and we'll have to wait a couple of years to see. How it turns out, but um, it's a very, very strong likelihood. That students who feel that confidence and have that, if you wanna call it um, math readiness. I don't wanna miss and call it like, strength or capacity, cause I think they all have strength and capacity, but like. You know, in the moment readiness, I think it's an interesting way to think about how to create the kind of access that I hear our board talking. While holding true to um, you know, to values of equity and access.
I think I probably should switch over to my comments at some point, um. And I will shortly, I I do wanna echo something trustee Ho said, I do think, so I I agree with trustee Proctor, I I don't, I'm not gonna necessarily say. Algebra, eighth grade is mandatory to go to an elite institution or to go to a school that's a good fit, but I do agree that that is something that our parents and our community are seeking. I can say from personal experience, and as you trustee Ho referenced this, when she first ran for her position. There are a lot of parents who don't have confidence in our ability, especially at the middle school level, to meet their children's academic and particularly math needs. I am a fifth grade GATE parent, and my daughter's friends are all actively seeking private school. Because they've heard these same stories from older students, that's appalling to me, as somebody who believes in public education, as somebody who's a trustee for our district. It's not universal, and yes, it's heavily, more heavily concentrated in certain programs, but I don't think that's an acceptable outcome for us, all of us who care. About real equity, which requires excellence, which is not something that we do in spite of excellence, and I know no one here is saying that. But it pains me that that narrative is part of our community, partly because honestly, again, as I've always said, it's not about what we do, it's our failure to communicate. What we're doing and why we're doing, and so. Before I jump into the rest, I just wanna echo what trustee Ho said about wanting the data, the piece I alluded to earlier. One point that sticks out to me on the data is the fifty two percent. I I understand the challenges we're facing, especially coming out of COVID, especially by the time these students are in middle school, they're. Aggregated, you know, losses, missed, or newcomers that are coming in, there's a lot of different factors, but. It's very hard to, even seeing the improvement, which I appreciate, it's still very hard to see that number, and I think whether we're talking about our ceiling or our floor. I know that everyone in the district is trying everything they can, but this is, I think, the push we're feeling, both as parents, as trustees. Um, and as people who care about our schools and our community, is that it doesn't feel sufficient to the problem that we're tasked with, and that some of this may be beyond our control. But I I know everyone here is very much convinced seeing those numbers go up, um, I did wanna say, to switch gears a bit. When we went to the Math Equity Summit, when we've been in these classrooms, it is absolutely amazing, like, I am so inspired by our teachers, everyone here, and by. Taking the tone that I'm taking, I just wanna be clear, I'm not condemning at all the incredible gains that we've made, the the dedication of our teachers. The way that math education has evolved, the way that we've gotten so much better about striving for depth, striving for real understanding. Again, not just drill and kill, not just solve for the test, not just see this problem plug into solution, like, we are building an actual enthusiasm, a readiness. A greater understanding, a visual understanding of how to approach these problems in a way that will make our students lifelong learners, and I hundred percent appreciate that. And I'm very much inspired by that every time we've seen it, it's been one of the most amazing experiences as a trustee, to see how education has changed from when we were kids. And recognizing I would have benefited so much from this approach that so many of us have adopted, and a lot of folks in this room are responsible for coming up with. But like I said, when we have students coming in on a Thursday night, asking for harder math. That's just something that shouldn't be an acceptable outcome for us, um, the fact that our elementary school programs have done so much to inspire these students. To love education, to love math, to seek challenge, to seek the productive struggle, these are not students shying away from struggle, they're seeking productive struggle. And one way or another, we're failing to do so, as we revisit Zern, and as we revisit looking at new curriculum, one of the advantages we have of technology, and I know that's a mixed. Approach for certain parents, is that, like you said, with a specific topic, everyone can learn the same lesson. But then attack it at different levels, attack it at the level of proficiency, and the fact that there are so many tools now available, many of which a lot of trustees saw. At the big gathering of uh, annual trustees um, in Anaheim this year, there are a lot of ways we can solve for that, so I do hope that this is top of mind. As we design that curriculum, and I hope at the middle school level, to the extent that we don't have to redo the curriculum, but try to find ways to make sure that happens, and I think I agree with trustee Proctor. Telling students to go take your own workbook and go in a corner, I don't think is the right solution here, but if we can't offer the level of challenge that they're seeking in our classrooms, they will. But if we can't offer the level of challenge that they're seeking in our classrooms, they will opt out of that class, that school, this district. And especially now, we're based in Silicon Valley, some of these parents are, you know, some of the top engineers and mathematicians of our generation. It's just really appalling to me that we can't commit them at their level. And so to the extent that we can, I think a lot of the work that we've done equity has been phenomenal. I do still think fifty-two percent is much lower than where we all wanna be, and we're definitely working towards raising that number. But also making sure that we are assisting those high achievers as well, and making sure that they have a place in our district, I think is important. And I especially wanna commend our students who came out here today. When I was your age, I couldn't speak in front of my class. The fact that you came in here to speak in front of the superintendent, the people who run our math program, our trustees, I think is really exceptional, and I'm sorry we put you in a situation that you had to do that.
Okay, I make one comment, just to add what you said. So I just wanna, I wanna make sure that when we say things like, a lot of, a lot of families have lost confidence, or a lot of families are looking at private schools, like, like, really, how many are we talking about? Like, is it in your circle? Because in my circle in Foster City, you know, I'm not hearing the same thing. And so I think when we're, like, we should look at the data. Like, how many, how many kids do we lose to private middle schools? And, and really, maybe it's not that many, and maybe it's a, a certain subset of students that we just need to really make sure we're, we're providing them what they need. And so, you know, I don't, I don't really hear the same comments. Obviously, we've got emails that are very targeted towards this topic right now. But I think in general, that's not the consensus, and I think this is a topic where we just need to all come together and, and find a solution for, that works for every student.
Trustee Proctor, I haven't heard any of those comments in my circles either, and I, I'm pretty active in the community in different areas. In fact, I get a lot of very excited parents who have and, and really appreciate the adjustments that we have made over the last few years. And so I, I'm really appreciative of it. I do understand that we do need to challenge our students who need to be challenged, and we just need to figure out ways to do that. And I think that is a targeted approach. We do need to utilize our resources and intentionally flag students who we see are high achievers and challenge them more. And I mean, just as we're doing with the ones who are struggling, and we're providing the extra supports for them. We do need to take that information and expand on.
I'd like to add on that too. You know, as a person who currently works at a private school, you know, we make our money, right, from offering Algebra I and Geometry at the middle school level. Families who do, I, I, you know, I agree with, uh, Trustee Kim on this. Families who don't feel that they see this structure available within our school district, they will leave. And frankly, that's how private schools make their money, right? That, they're, they're providing an advantage that they're not gonna be able to get. Nobody wants to actually send their kids to private, because nobody wants to pay tuition on top property taxes. But they will do it if they feel that there's something that there's missing, or their students are not being served in a particular way. And so, you know, and having worked in a, in a private school, like, we, so many of our kids are coming in, in the ninth grade, taking Algebra II. And I do understand that, and I agree with the sentiment that success is not defined just by getting into a highly selective college, right? And there's so much more to that. You know, to the, there's a broader definition of success here. At the same time, you know, our kids need to be able to compete. And I think when I look at the landscape of who's getting in and where and why, to what colleges and what advantages, I wanna do what I can as a board member to make sure that all of the kids in our district are having every single chance, a fighting chance to compete with everybody else. And so I think that's where a lot of my, my feeling and my passion is, because for me, it's not, you know, whether or not a kid decides to take algebra or not, that's up to the family and the students. But we wanna, I wanna give them the ability to be able to ascend, right? The chance to be able to, to compete. And it's, it's really, it's, yeah, it, it's something that I see working in a high school every single day. It, that's very jarring. You know, kids coming from a private school education, coming into our high school at Algebra II, sometimes even at pre-calculus, and they're winning the valedictorian spots. They're getting the highest spots in the high school, and they're nabbing those, those great, the highest level of colleges. And I wanna make sure that we're educating our students to be able to have a chance to fight.
And I agree. I mean, I have observed our, the, the big demographic of our kids being left behind, because that is the only push that has been instituted for many years. And not, taken away from that being a, an option to support the high achievers. Our district numbers has shown for themselves what it need, and we have done that. We have came in, we've created systemic changes that have allowed all of the students to be successful, or at least have a fighting chance to be successful in the curriculum that we're serving them with. So that I appreciate. And in addition to the school only pushing that direction, they, those students were also able to get extra supports because of their economic circumstances. So, and they'll, and they'll still are current with families who are able to afford the supports outside of the school supports that we serve. So I am very appreciative of what we have done here. I've seen more systemic changes for the betterment of all of our kids in the last four years than I've seen in the last twenty. So I can tell you, the school is definitely, this district is moving in the right direction. So I appreciate your efforts.
Just out of my prior comments, I hundred percent agree with Trustee Books. We are very much trending in the right direction, and I think, again, the frustration I expressed earlier, I apologize for, but it's, I, I do wanna echo something I think Trustee Proctor said in prior meeting. It would be very helpful for us to see how the work we're doing, especially at the middle school level, feeds directly into the high school level. I had a meeting with the high school trustees just offline, and one of our school visits, where I asked specifically for the Montessori schools that don't offer algebra, do you offer algebra as a summer school class for ascending ninth graders to maybe take it there, so that again, then parents aren't paying out of pocket for a separate course, just to give certification to try to wade through. And I do believe to the extent that we can see and can see how our math scores, our reading, writing, everything is feeding directly into them, and track our students' success over time. And we're operating under the theory here that students are skipping to their level in high school. I don't know that we have any evidence that's true. Once they leave our district, I'm not sure that we're actually tracking what happens. And I think, actually, the superintendent's point earlier about a student choosing to say be a part of orchestra instead of taking a dual math course, I think that's why I'm very insistent that if they were ready to skip seventh and move into eighth, that should have been offered to them as a default option. And that shouldn't be something they had to be knowledgeable enough, or navigating enough, or essentially owning their own academic career and curriculum enough to have to figure out at that age. It should have been something that was offered, so that that student could take algebra and take orchestra later on as well. And so just wanna emphasize again, all the data requests we had, especially the breakdown, but also the different cohort data information, I think would be helpful for us, because, again, we recognize we are improving. But I think it's helpful for us to kind of see where those gaps are, and not have to hear it from the community. I think to Trustee Proctor's point again, I, I don't doubt that a majority of students continue to stay in their district. I don't necessarily see that as a success if they are actively trying to seek elsewhere, or don't feel that their students are being taken for, uh, taken care of adequately. And so I think the parent sentiment survey that was suggested, to the extent that we can push that and get a response rate that actually gives us confidence in those results would be helpful, because I know we're all striving constantly to find areas to improve. And if there is a narrative out there, if there is a lack of confidence in our ability to serve our students, I think that's something we have to be mindful of, in terms of both how we approach the education, but also how we approach our communication.
All right. Good, that was our session, our study session today. I wanna thank you all for attending online and in person. Students who have come and shared their, their thoughts. We will definitely be taking this matter very seriously, and we will take these things into consideration, and we will move forward. At this time, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.